Good evening.
Good evening.
I'd like to welcome you to the January 25th regular monthly meeting. This is our early session and this evening we're going to hear a presentation regarding our facility study. And at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Bracy who will introduce our consultants. Dr. Bracy?
Thank you Chairman Parent, Board members, and good evening to those of you in attendance this evening. Over the past year, we've really begun to take a hard look at our classrooms and buildings to see if they're meeting the needs of our students. The classroom environment can add or detract from a positive student learning experience. Today's parents, students, and staff expect state-of-the-art and security features. I've heard from teachers, parents, students, who've expressed concern about the poor state of some of our buildings. To be honest, their assessments are accurate. Many of our schools are old and in need of serious repair and renovation, and in some cases, total replacement. The operations staff, they do a great job in maintaining our buildings, but there's only so much patchwork that can be done. So we wanted to take a closer look and get a better handle on the conditions of our facilities and what we can do to improve them. We've partnered with MBCon Construction Firm for a comprehensive review of our classroom, school buildings, and other facilities. Their findings confirm some of our own observations. Several of our schools have exceeded the typical lifespan. We don't have enough space for our middle school population, and we currently lack facilities to expand certain programs such as career and technical education. But the firm went beyond these holistic observations and examined each and every school in detail. I've invited them here tonight to share their sobering findings so you can learn, as we did, just how much work needs to be done and why we need your support to carry out a reasonable plan and address these needs. MBCon has decades of experience with school construction and site analysis. They spend a large chunk of their time visiting our schools, talking with staff. They will provide a summary of their major findings, and I will share with you a preliminary plan to address our needs. We'll also have some time for questions. And with that, I'll turn it over at this time to Margaret Rush, who's coming up first.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To Dr. Bracy, Mr. Parent, other members of the board, on behalf of MBCon Construction, it is indeed our pleasure to be here to make this presentation to you this evening. For those of you that may not know who I am, my name is Margaret Rush. I've been with MBCon Construction for 12 years. I'm also a former DOT Commissioner for 12 years. My primary responsibility is contractor certification, the development of on-the-job training, and intern development programs. And I'm hopeful that we will have an opportunity to implement those programs here with you. Our roots are very deep here in the state of Virginia, and you will see that through the presentation from our team that has been on the ground here in Portsmouth. Chuck Sailers is a Vice President for MBCon Construction. He is a recognized educational facility professional. He is also a member of the Virginia Association of Learning Environments. Dennis Howard is a financial consultant with MBCon, and he is a Virginia native. Dr. John Dunn and Jim Ruhlen are school consultants, and Jim, of course, is a Virginia native. Maggie Brown is a key member of the team, and I'm sure that many of you have had an opportunity to meet her during the gathering of a lot of this information. Robbie Brax is our Director of Preconstruction. He's been with MBCon Construction for 25 years. He's completed over 50 facility studies and even more school building programs. And Haley Bowers, who is also a key member of this team, she has been with MBCon for 11 years, and she has focused primarily on public schools. And so I'd like now to have Haley to come.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
It's a pleasure to be here and to finally be able to show you a little bit of what we've been working on the past several months. As you can see, we have many team members. We couldn't even bring everyone here. So there's just been a lot of people working on this. It's been a great process, and we're very pleased to be able to show you some of the details tonight. We will not be showing you everything tonight because it's going to be a thick book, but we're just trying to highlight the summary for you tonight. We also don't expect for any or all of you to take our recommendations 100%. I don't think in the history of us doing these, and I've been with the company for 11 years, any board has ever taken our studies and done 100% of what we put in there. We hope that you will take it, look at it, and maybe come up with your own plan, take some of the ideas, maybe you come up with your own hybrid of ideas. And so that's what it's meant to be. It's not meant to be an all-inclusive process. Just a little bit about MBCon. We've been doing these all over the southeast for many, many years. Every school facility study is different, and Portsmouth is no exception. No exception. You guys are -- Portsmouth is very unique, and I mean that not in a negative way. You have many unique opportunities and challenges, and I think challenges lead to even more opportunities. And some of the things that you're dealing with are things that, you know, school divisions all over the nation are dealing with. But again, you do have some unique things, and we'll be talking about some of those tonight as well. The way we started this process with your school division was to visit all of those facilities, all the schools and facilities in your division. We also asked the principals all the same questions. It was a list of questions. Just one example of a question was, when does your cafeteria lunchtime start and end? The reason we asked that is because sometimes it can show, if you have a lunch period that lasts for three hours, sometimes that means the cafeteria's too small or there's too many kids to get through the line at one time. It can mean that, sometimes it can't. But that's just an example of a question that we asked the principals. We asked them all the same questions. And we toured the schools. We then compared our data and our findings of the size of the schools, the age of the schools, to things like the Virginia Department of Education guidelines. And we'll be going into that tonight briefly as well. Just a little bit about your community and the school division. Portsmouth is a great town, great restaurants, really enjoyed being here. I don't think that the schools can really be separated from the business or the community. It's all kind of interrelated. And I think you have some great opportunities here with the types of industry that you have here, and we'll be talking about that a little bit when we get to your career and technical education piece. And so that's another example of some great opportunities I think there are in Portsmouth. When we went into your schools, just a compliment to the receptionists, the principals, and some of the maintenance staff that were there that we ran into, everyone was welcoming. They were on us as soon as we got there with security. You know, we couldn't just walk in. We were timed in, and so the security and everything was done very well. And so that doesn't happen everywhere, believe it or not. And so I'd just like to compliment you all on that as well. Everyone was dedicated. They answered our questions. They were very responsive. No one tried to hide anything from us. And so we crawled into buildings and boiler rooms, and we had a key to every room, electrical closets. We opened the closets, and so there was no stone kind of left unturned when we looked at your schools. Really quick, we did, as part of this study, we did do a student enrollment projection. Again, it's a projection based on past data, and they did project a slight decline for Portsmouth City Schools. Again, that doesn't account for if a new business comes in, or if there's a big project that comes in at one of the current businesses, that could increase. So that could change. It's just a projection. And even though it is a slight decline, when you consider that amount spread out over the, you know, 19 schools that you all have, it's not that much. And so we did look at things like consolidation and things like that, but to be honest with you, there was not a lot of room for closing schools and combining schools with the population that you have because you still have a lot of students and you still have an area that they're spread out over. And so your schools still need to be maintained, and there's actually even some areas where some schools are overcrowded or not large enough for the guidelines that we see. And we'll be going into that tonight, too. I just want to talk a little bit about your test scores because, again, just like I think that the businesses and the schools are related to economic development, you can't separate that, and I mean that in a positive way. You also, the facilities and the test scores can also be connected. And the way that I mean that is an example, natural daylight. That is one thing that has been proven to improve kids' test scores. Natural light coming into the room wakes you up, makes you more alert, makes you feel better. I mean, you just know it in your own work. And so some of your schools, you know, Churchland Middle, you know, doesn't have a lot of windows. You know, one of the floors doesn't have very many windows at all. And again, I'm not saying that's the only reason, but look at your reading pass test scores for grade three. I don't know if you can read that, but the left is grade three in the first column. Portsmouth City Schools is right there along with the state. So your schools are doing, you know, just like the other schools across the state of Virginia. But when you get to grade eight in middle school, they go down a little bit more than the rest of the state. I'm not saying that's just because of windows, and I'm not here to say that's because of the teachers or anything at the middle school. There's a lot of factors that go into that and then that for this area. But I do think, looking at the middle school facilities, and we will be talking more about that later, the middle schools and the facilities are one of the focus areas that we think could maybe help with this. The same thing is on your math. Your Portsmouth City Schools is right up there with your math test scores with the rest of the state. But when you get to grade eight, it's going down a little bit, and we think, again, that that's an area of focus for the middle schools, and we think that your facilities can help with that. Another factor example is teacher recruitment. With new schools, teachers like new schools. It's just one of the things that's, you know, there, and we think that that could be another area of improvement when you talk about facilities. Another thing that we tried to consider in our recommendations were equity across all the areas of Portsmouth and some consistency in some of the grade configurations and things like that. Just one example, you guys have seventh and eighth graders at your middle schools. Most areas, you know, that we go into across the southeast are doing six, seven, and eight. And so we're going to talk a little bit about that. That's one of those unique challenges that I talked about earlier that may be an opportunity for you all to improve in another area as well. And I'm going to have Robbie and Maggie come and get into the details of your study.
So when developing your proposed improvement plan, we went around to all your schools, and we did site visits, and we did meetings with a lot of your leadership and staff. And we came up with four improvement areas that we felt like we could categorize all your needs into: capacity, age, educational program, and condition. Once we had these areas defined, we were able to come up with some components and some priorities for your improvement plan, and we're going to go through that next. Our goal of this section of the plan is to kind of walk you through our process and provide you a summary of the whole improvement plan. So the first area of improvement we looked at was capacity. So currently, the state of Virginia has guidelines that basically provide you a size of a facility that you need for a certain enrollment of students. And so we looked at your 2017 enrollments, and we looked at the current sizes of your schools, and when we compared that to the guidelines, and we found that you have overcrowding in three of your elementary schools currently. I mean, as Haley said earlier, you have your sixth graders in those elementary schools, which is a non-traditional grade structure. So part of our solution in helping in the capacity issues at your elementary schools was our solution was to move the sixth graders to the middle schools. So currently, at your middle schools, you only have seventh and eighth grade, and you have excess space at your middle schools. But when you move those sixth graders in, you now have capacity issues at all three of your middle schools. Our solution for that is to, for you guys, to add a fourth middle school. Not only will this address your capacity issues, but it'll also bring you closer to that traditional grade structure.
So that's the problems and solutions with capacity. Being the senior member of the presenters, I was elected to be talking, to talk about age.
Oh.
Since I'm closing in on that red zone over there, I will tell you this, that, you know, I can cover up and make it look good, but I don't function the way I used to. And it's the same way with schools. 50% of your schools were designed and built 50 to 60 years ago, and that's when these things were designed and built, okay? Now, these have been replaced, and their replacements function better, they're more efficient, and they're easier to use. Your schools should be, too. So for solving the age issue that we have, that you have, we recommend that you start or reenact a replacement plan for your schools. Now, not everybody can replace all of them, half your schools. You can't replace all of them at one time. That's a very financially challenging approach. So how do you do it? Well, you can go with your, replacing all your old elementary schools, but that, and then do your middle schools, but how far out will it be till your middle schools get there? So what we recommend is that you replace some of your schools at each level. Your high schools are your newest schools, so we need to concentrate on elementary and middle schools. And so we've earmarked here, you're the three oldest of your elementary and three oldest of your middle schools.
So the third area that we looked at for improving is your educational program. And the area that we found that needed, that had the most needs and that would bring the biggest impact was your career and technology education. There's been a national focus placed on career and technology education because it allows students to map their career paths and prepare them to become community members. And so we looked at your course offerings, which are now at your individual high schools. We looked at possibly expanding at your high schools, but it's not necessarily the most efficient option. So we recommend that you consider adding a new centralized CTE facility. This will not only bring your students from all three high schools together to learn, it will also provide a central location for the community and for your local businesses to get involved in the education of your students. And then the fourth area that we looked at was your facility condition, and this is over all of your schools. We found some deficiencies in safety, security, and accessibility, some infrastructure, and some general renovations. Safety, security, and accessibility are things like security vestibules, ADA door hardware and ramps, and things like ADA restrooms. Infrastructure, your basic infrastructure of an aging school is ending its lifespan. It needs to be replaced. But a lot of times, we throw money at, you know, fixing this infrastructure instead of replacing the school, but at a certain age, as Robbie was saying earlier, it is more cost-efficient to replace the school. And with general renovations, these may seem superficial, but ultimately, these increase the appeal of your school and provide comfortable working environments and learning environments for your students and your staff.
All right, so we went through those pretty quickly. That's a preview of what is in the facility study report. The facility study report is not being presented tonight. It's in its final edit, and it will be brought to you, printed and brought to you here shortly. But we wanted to go ahead and do this presentation to get you to start thinking about what to do next. The report, when we bring it to you, is going to have all the things that we just discussed, which is summarized right here. Now let me tell you, let me just kind of give you a warning that, you know, when you have half of your schools that were designed and built in the middle of the last century, and they, all those are exceeding their life expectancy, and you need to do something about it, the price tag for all this is going to be pretty big. I just want to warn you, the price tag is going to be pretty big, and we're not going to present that price tag tonight. So what we did in the study is to prioritize our recommendations. And what we want to do tonight is show you our top three priorities, recommendations. The first recommendation is really, it's tied to an educational recommendation, all right? As we said, your elementary schools are crowded. The normal model is for the sixth graders to be in the middle schools. So you take the sixth graders out, you create a better environment for your elementary students, and you put the sixth graders with the older kids. It's a better situation for them as well. But when you do that, you have, you do develop a capacity issue, but by adding a fourth middle school, you level out the enrollments. You don't have one with too many students in it, as you have now. The cost for that middle school that we are recommending, we show it right here, $38 million. I want to mention something about the costs that you see in front of you here. When we present a budget, a recommended budget, to our educational clients, to all our clients, this is an all-inclusive number. This is not just what you pay a contractor to build, to do bricks and mortar. This has got to cover the cost of all the architects and engineers and consultants that you have to have to design the facility. It has to cover the property, if you are buying property. It has to cover some preliminary testing and engineering that has to be done. It has to cover some costs that you have to pay to regulatory, to meet regulatory agency requirements. It has to pay for your data, your computer networking, any kind of security systems that you have, telephone systems. It has to pay for desks, chairs, kitchen equipment, media center site. This is an all-inclusive cost. So if you want to compare it to everything, make sure that it is apples to apples. So that's how we present our numbers, and I did want to make a note about that. Our second recommendation is the first step in replacing your schools. We believe that the first school you should replace is Churchland Elementary School, and we believe that for two reasons. One, this school has some challenges underneath it, some foundation challenges, some settlement issues. These are things that the school division has had to wrestle with for a while, and it's something that's very difficult to deal with on a construction standpoint, especially with the age of the facility. The second reason why we mentioned this school, or we suggested this school, is because it has more elementary students in it than any other elementary school. It's got 22% more than any other school you've got. So building this new school will impact a large number of elementary students. Our third recommendation is the centralized career and technology education facility, and it's, you know, for the reasons that we said. Basically, it provides more opportunities for more students. Now, whether you just do these three recommendations or whether you add to it, one thing I will say, if you break it up, one thing we highly recommend is that you allot, when you start putting a plan together, you allot some funds to cover some of those safety, security, and infrastructure issues that Maggie mentioned at your other schools. All right, so now you have a preview of what's coming in this report. It's got something for you to start thinking about. But what you also need to think about is, you know, what's our next step? You know, how do we get started? And for that, I'm going to ask Haley to talk to you about the program implementation.
Thanks. As Robbie mentioned, the projects that we showed you tonight and put a number on tonight, that's not everything in this facility study. The report that you will be getting has projects, upgrades at all of your existing schools that we believe that you'll be using. And so I don't want anybody to think that those are the only things or the only schools that we are recommending anything be done to. You will be getting a report, again, that will list all of the schools, and we have upgrades at all of your existing schools. As you know, putting together a program of this size and complexity, especially when you're doing upgrades at, you know, maybe 22 different buildings, is a big task. And I know you guys know that I'm preaching to the choir here, but, you know, procuring, I know you guys like using SWAM firms, local firms, getting all that together, that's something that we, you know, we'd like to help you with if we can continue. Putting together the overall program, we hope we can continue to help you with that. A lot of my school board members like to take the study, review it, and then maybe go to one of the schools in their area and, you know, have the list with them and look and see, okay, they have restroom down here. Let me see what this restroom looks like. I'm not saying that you have time to do that at all of your schools, but it is a neat thing to go to. And I know some of you know the schools better than I do. Your kids, grandkids maybe have gone there or in there now. We are a fresh set of eyes on your schools, and I think that's hopefully been a benefit to you as you look through the study. But you, as the school board members, represent those areas in your community, and you know more about the history of the schools and the people in those schools. And so again, I reiterate, we don't want you to take our recommendations as, you know, an all-in or all-out kind of deal. We hope that you will look at the study, go and maybe look at some of the schools, and compare the information, and we'll be glad to answer any questions. And Dr. Bracy, I'd like to turn it back over to you.
Thank you Haley, and the rest of the staff from MBCon. I appreciate you all coming and providing this report for us and doing the facility study. What you've done is sort of confirmed some of the things that we've seen, but we knew we needed to get an outside set of eyes to take a look at it as well. As far as looking at the need for the 6A model, that's something that we've talked about. You know, we even had some plans of maybe looking at modulators, but we didn't necessarily want to go that way. We realize the condition, as you mentioned, of Churchland Elementary School and the condition of it, that year in, year in after year, that we have to work on some type of plan to upgrade the flooring that Robbie mentioned with the settlement. So we appreciate you confirming that, and I look forward to the detailed report where that we can look at for the overall plan for all of our facilities, but definitely getting us started with looking at the potential, of the possibility of a new middle school and even somewhere down the line, the replacement of Churchland Elementary. And the tours, as you see the school tours, I had the privilege a couple of weeks ago to sit, our city manager, Dr. Patton, and I went out and I took her out to see Churchland Middle. I was sharing with her some of the preliminary reports from what you all were sharing with me, and I wanted me, and I wanted her to get a firsthand view of, of what the school looks like. I'm sure she's ridden by there, she's probably attended a game, but I'd share with her, you haven't been in the building, you haven't seen how the students travel up the stairs, you haven't seen the, the whole second floor, where the only windows are in the, in the media center. So those conditions there are not the best and not conducive for our environment. So I think the tours I will share with the board, that it would be nice for them to, to go on a tour, to see some of the specifics that you will mention, whether it's mechanical or electrical that they can see, as well as extending that invitation to the city council. And I, hopefully with that, you all will be able to accompany us to point out those things, because we want you all, being the experts that have done this, to be along, to point those out with us.
Okay. Mrs. Rush, and Haley, and, and your, and your staff, thank you very much for this report. I know it's a preliminary report, and there is information to come for us as board members to review. I'm not going to ask, Haley, I'm not going to ask you to, and I'm not going to put you on the spot, to, to make a judgment. But two things that, that stood out, and it's really is, is my passion is the, and it's a passion, I think, across this country, is one, that when industry, you talked about schools and economic development. When people come into a community, they want to make sure that you have high-quality schools. And then when they send their, their, their children to schools, they want their, they want the best schools. So when we look, and I know, being a former principal, we had relatives who come in and, and parents who come in, especially military. And two things they look for is, one is safety. Safety is, is very paramount, not only in Portsmouth, but across this whole country. And the second thing is, is technology, is the infrastructure. And I'm not asking you to make a judgment, but I know that in the report, because I know that our IT department has done a, has done a very good job based on the, the available revenue, but more and more, technology is going to frame the educational programs in our future. It's already happening. CTE is, you know, there was a time when we had CTE, and then we thought in education that we're going to throw that away because we want every child to go to college. And we found out that not every child was going to college. And so now we have children who are not able to, they don't want to go to college. They graduate from high school and they have no skills. And so what we want to make sure is that we have a very strong CTE program, and, and I think the, you know, we've talked about the, having a, a building, as you have recommended, facility, that, that would be just like, I think, Prudence, Prudence School, that our, the students that were going there. So the two areas that, you know, I'm really going to, I'm going to be looking at is safety. And I know that you had, you started off your comments that you felt welcome, you felt safe. So I know that we have procedures in place in all of our schools. So those are things that I'm going to be, as, as a board member, I'm going to be looking at, because that's very, very important.
Yes, sir. And to your point, we do have funds at all of the existing schools. I think we have a lot of landscape improvements, just some, we call them kind of storefront-type things.
Right.
Some of the doors, the front doors.
Sure.
You know, maybe some extra security measures and things like that. So we do, you will be seeing that for all the existing schools.
Okay. Before I introduce Mr. Lamb, I'd like to introduce our mayor. I think he's standing behind you. Mayor John Rowe is here this evening. I would like for you, if you would come forward, give you an opportunity, if you would like to make some comments, and introduce your staff. I know that City Manager Lydia Patton is here, Councilman Bill Mooney is here, Councilman Louise Burke is here, I think, and I think I saw Mrs., Council, Lisa Burke, I'm sorry. And then I think Councilman Elizabeth Simmons is here. And I don't know if any other, if then you've got members of your staff here, so I'm going to let you.
Well, thank you, sir.
If I missed anybody.
Thank you, and thank you for inviting us. In fact, we have, we could have a council meeting tonight. We have a quorum. And I'd like, I'd like for all of the city council to stand if they would, please. And of course, we have our former vice mayor and our new city treasurer, Paige Sherry. And Paige, if you would stand. And then I'm going to ask our city manager, Dr. Lydia Patton, to come up also. And this is budget season for us, and we've been going through the same process. Dr. Patton briefed council on the, the first phase of looking at our capital needs. And so this is very, very timely. And she's got her budget team here, and would you like to introduce those?
Yes, I will, I would ask that, thank you, mayor. I would ask that the entire budget team that's present for the 2019 budget to stand, please. And I ask all of them to come, because I, this is very important.
I think, I think the fact that we have such a presence tonight
Yes.
is a sign of how important this is to city council and to the city administration. We want you to have the best facilities that we can, can get, and bar none.
It's very interesting that the lead-off tonight for this presentation talked about economic development. And the mayor and city council on Monday night, I presented to them the FY29 budget strategic initiatives. And the overarching theme for this budget is economic development. And mayor and members of council, if you would like for me to share the PowerPoint that was presented to you all during that meeting to the entire school board, and then they will see exactly how the connectivity of what the approach will be for this budget and where you are with the facility study. Dr. Bracy and I have talked about this since 2017, and now it's coming to fruition. So we are very excited, very interested, and look forward to the final report.
Right. Thank you.
And one last thing, actually, two last things. We look forward to getting your recommendation, but Dr. Bracy, thank you for the invitation. Not speaking for all of council, but I'm sure there are many of us who would like to take that tour and, and look with you and, and the consultant at the issues. I thought the most dramatic slide up there was the comparison of what was made in 1950s. I had a TV set like that. I think our first one was
Right.
in that slide. Thank you. Thank you for asking us to, to come tonight.
And thank you all for coming.
Yes, sir.
And your staff. Thank you very much. Now, Mr. Lamb?
Thank you, Chairman Parent. Just, just a couple of things, and whoever can answer the question, if it's Dr. Bracy or the team, just direct it where it needs to be. First off, I understand what has been presented was just a snapshot, and they had said that there was a thick book that's already prepared, and I guess it's the preliminary. If possible, I would like to still have access to the preliminary study, and then, of course, when the final study comes, that as well. I'd like to have, be able to read and update and have access to what's already been done and prepared. That's first. Secondly, my colleague to my right, Ms. Angelie Smoke Allen, we, she's got the calculator here, and if you look at just the three facilities that was brought up, that's attuned to $106 million. If you look at the breakdown of what was told to us, if I'm reading this right, if I got my numbers, I'm a history person, not a math person, a total of 15 schools are in the category of between 40 to 60 years. This is just three facilities right here, and one would be a brand-new CTE program, and not even looking at the, the schools over here. So here's, here's my question, and it, and it's two parts. I know when we've talked about this before, we've said that best practices is usually the number 50 years. Now, as a classroom teacher, when I hear the term best practices, that means certain things. And so what I want to know is, in this arena, in this area, when we say best practices is 50 years, I understand the common sense of what was shown up here, and I understand things get old and this and that, but my question is, what is the rationale for the number 50 years when it comes to facilities? I mean, I've been doing some reading on it and so forth. Why is it 50 years as opposed to 52 years or 48 years? And if we do do something like this, and even if we could do all of this all at once and get all these brand-new buildings up and running, does that mean that the technologies that are put into new buildings today will only last another 50 years? Or is it further, or, you know, just what is it?
Okay. Well, I will, I'll address the first part of the question, and then I'll ask maybe Robbie to come back to talk about the life expectancy of the facility. The report, I know the, the report that they referenced, I think, within the next few weeks, I believe the final report will be, will be ready. So if, if not, I will make sure I follow up with you on that. The, I think what, what, what I've seen since I've come in as superintendent, and how we got to the point of having so many schools fall into 50- to 60-year timeframe, is that we didn't really have a CIP plan in place in terms of looking at facilities on a timeline, if they're 40 to 50 years, to look at replacement. And as I did some research and study, we've had some of the facilities that were mentioned, Churchland Elementary, rather than at that time, looking at something for a new facility with the overcrowding as an issue, a wing was built onto that building. So if you have a building, I guess at that time, maybe 55 years old, it's not really, and I guess we'll describe best practice, to come in and put a new wing on that. At that time, we should take a look at replacement or some type of renovation at, at that point. So, and the purpose of this is to give us that plan, to put that plan in place that we didn't have. As, as they mentioned, we have 50% of our schools that are 50, 50 years or older. Well, what we did not have in place is what we will have now, is a, is an outline of the schools that, that would need to be replaced, or schools that, that we've heard since I've been on board, the interest in the CTE center as well. That will be included in that. But with all of these recommendations, and I'm sure in the final report, because that question you asked is one that I, during one of the snow days when I was snowed in, I called Haley, and I said to her, I said, what I want to see is a, also, is a comprehensive plan of replacement for our facilities. That way, we would have that. So, and then, working with the city, we would have an idea of what could be done, but at least we would have the, the foundation laid out in terms of which ones we need to look at first. And that's something that you all, as a board, would take a look at and help making those decisions based on recommendations that we received from the final report. So Robbie, will you come and talk to us about how we get to the, the magic number of 50? 50 is, 50 is good.
Well, you know, you have to put a, a number on everything, really. You know, they say their, your HVAC system at your house should last 15 years. I had to do mine at 13. Just finished doing that. I don't know that there's a magic formula, but everything gets old. You know, your buildings, you can change out the roof, you can change out the air conditioning and such, but you still have the, the basic infrastructure, the structural aspect of your building, the electrical base, everything. It just, it deteriorates in time. The other thing to, with buildings as well, is that, you know, every, it seems like every year, we ask for safer buildings, sprinklers in the buildings. Make sure the doors open out so the students can get out in case there's an emergency. Wind loads, if you're on the coast. All these things have increased, codes have increased. And, you know, trying to adapt an old school to the new codes. By the time you got it down, well, let me tell you another example, too. We've had to do this on several different schools. The, the, the air conditioning codes have changed over the years, all right? So now you have to have more fresh air in the building, because we demand that we have, you know, keep the germs out and such. When you add more fresh air, you have to go with a, a bigger unit. So when you put a bigger unit on the roof, well, that wasn't designed for the bigger unit. So what we've had to do sometimes is to build a frame over the school in order to put the building on there. I mean, the, the mechanical on there. So 50-year-old schools, by the time you try and bring them up to all the codes and all the safety elements that we want as a society, you're probably going to be 80% or 90% of the cost of a new. And those schools are not laid out the way that you do education today. You know, we're, we're into collaboration, collaborative learning and a bunch of different elements. The CTE programs, you know, today's concept is that you build flexible labs, not just one built for masonry, designed for masonry or for carpentry, but flexible labs, so that, that companies can come in and say, I'm going to need some employees in a few years, and they need to be taught this. The flexible lab will adapt to, to, you know, you can adapt that to the curriculum that they need you to do. But the old, 50-year-old labs aren't done that way. So in summary, you know, there's, there's not a mathematical formula for, for the age of it, but it's what we have found, and over time, is what is, 50 years is about as far as you can go. You should go with a school. Will it last longer? Yes, but you're really sacrificing some things.
Any other members of the board have any comments? I would like for you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, I'm going to turn the mic on, just to be sure. One of the questions that I would like to see, and I think we do this in every other aspect as we look at items as a board, is who else in our region has built in the, in the past five years? Are they building new schools, or are they replacing schools? I'd like to see where we are in terms of, I'm not going to say keeping up with the Joneses because we all know that Portsmouth is unique and, and we, we are Portsmouth, and we're not going to do something because somebody else has done it. However, if we have other areas building schools, what has been their build rate? What have they built? Have they replaced, have they built new? And have they seen an increase in scores in new buildings? So that we can see if we can get a read on it. Because I do know that the, the, the literature, probably about two years ago, was saying that if you upgraded things such as lighting, to move away from the fluorescent lighting and into LED lighting and doing more of the open, you're going to get between a 7% and a 10% increase in scores. Well, I know I'd like to see a 7% to 10% increase in scores in several of our buildings, you know? So as we look at things like that, I would really like to see what other divisions are doing as far as the number of schools, how big that school is that they're building, and were they replacing schools or were they building new schools? And just to see where everybody else is as well. I'm not saying we're keeping up with the Joneses, because I'm not about that. We have to do what's right for us. But if we're, if, if we have to compare and we have to retain and we have to recruit versus the other divisions, I'd like to know what we're up against. Thank you.
And while, when you brought up the, when you brought up retaining, you know, you can have, you can have beautiful schools, but as Mr. Ziegler told us tonight, these job fairs are very important, because we want to invite two Portsmouth to do our best. Because quality education is going to determine if you Because quality education is going to determine, if you have a quality teacher, regardless of what you have in the classroom, because years, we had chalkboards.
Right.
And we still have chalkboards, and we are replacing them, of course. But a good teacher can take a chalkboard and teach a great lesson.
Well.
I'm not putting down technology, because I love technology.
Right.
But I want us to look at our schools in light of, of building and having quality schools. But I want to be able, and I think it will correlate with the fact that you have new schools, new facilities, that you are attracting the best teachers. And those teachers are going to help you improve your, your student learning.
And I will say, can I, can I piggyback?
Sure.
I will say that during our snow days, it was nice to catch up with old friends. And some of those old friends were teachers that I worked with here in Portsmouth, and so we had some catching up to do, and they wanted to share some things. But I spoke to one teacher in particular that taught at Churchland Elementary, and she left Churchland Elementary, which is anomaly, because our teachers typically do not leave Churchland Elementary. It's one of those, I like to call it the legacy schools. But she's now working in a building that is 10 or 12 years old. She wasn't, she wasn't there when it was built, and she's new to the building. And she said, you won't believe the difference in aesthetics when you walk into that building, the way teachers feel about the building, and the way the students feel about the building. You know, they're less likely to drop and leave a spill. They're less likely to take, you know, I work in high school, they're less likely to take that Sharpie and go down the lockers, you know? Because there's, there's a pride, there is a, a sense of, I'm in a good place. And so she was just talking about the atmosphere, the environment, that something that's updated and newer brings to it. So it's, you know, it's not necess, it, it goes along with that retention for the teachers, but I think it also speaks to, to the value that we put on our students, to make sure that they're in a place, that they are safe, comfortable, and is a positive learning environment for them. Thank you.
Thank you. And once again, I want to thank our mayor, and our city manager, and our, our treasurer, because we'll be coming to, coming to you, knocking on your door, and all the members of city council, because I think if we work together, we can solve this together. And, and I look forward, we as a board look forward to working with you to resolve this. And I'm glad that you came tonight and brought your staff, so that we're all on the same page, and we can communicate, communicate together and work together moving forward. So thank you very much.